Good evening, everybody. We'll call this meeting to order and I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Dr. Lee?
Here.
Ms. Walden?
Here.
Ms. Inholster?
Here.
Mr. Reynolds?
Here.
Mr. Mullins?
Here.
Mr. Chambers?
Here.
Okay, um, the ma- the mayor is not feeling well today and she's not going to, um, be here at this meeting or, or online, um, at this meeting this afternoon, so I don't have any comments, so I'm going to move on with everything. Um, sorry, we do declare that our core is present and, um, we'll move on to the budget discussion, so I'll turn the meeting over to the city manager to begin.
Thank you. Uh, I really only have, um, one, uh, comment that I want to share with you, um, and then obviously, uh, we, we, me and myself, Ms. Danzy are available to take any questions that you have and discuss anything that, uh, you want to discuss regarding the budget. But, um, in, in the budget proposal that you all received, we figured in a 10% increase in insurance, as we typically do. We backed off of that last year to 5% in, in, last year, meaning this current budget. Um, and so far, we've been okay, uh, with that and being able to absorb the increase. So in order to create some discussion for you all, if necessary, for, um, available funds that could be backed out of the budget proposal that I shared with you all initially, if we dropped the insurance increase, um, assumption to 5% as opposed to 10% that it's currently is in your budget, that would free up, um, approximately $88,000 to be figured back into, uh, the budget in some other manner, um, if you chose to. Also, um, we do have the information, uh, if you're interested in it, uh, I can email it to you or I can give it to you during the meeting tonight if you think it would be beneficial, uh, but, uh, Chief Swickert's initial request was, uh, for four sworn officers and, uh, then a 7% across the board increase for his sworn, um, staff, uh, just for the purposes of being able to discuss and have some, uh, potential for additional money to move around. Um, I asked Ms. Danzy and she has figured what, a 3% across the board, a 4% across the board, and a 5% across the board for sworn officers would be for the police department. Um, and we figured those across the board, which is every sworn officer, including detectives, and then we figured it, uh, we figured those percentages, um, without anyone above a lieutenant. So, we, we pulled your major, um, uh, ma- major ranks out, um, to figure those percentages, so we've, we've got those figures and that would, you know, depending on what percentage you went with, you could be talking about a fairly appreciable amount of money, maybe something that might fund two of those additional sworn positions if that was something that you were, um, interested in, in, uh, in looking at. The only other thing I'll say is we kind of ran down a rabbit hole with the, the open and unadvertised approved positions that I shared with you last week, and I purely shared those in order for you all to see the amount of money that was currently in approved and open positions that had not been advertised. That was purely the purpose of that, so that, um, those positions are in this year's budget, they are in the budget proposal that you have for, uh, '21, '22, but that money could be backed out based on us deciding not to fill those positions, and we would actually back them out of the budget proposal at that point in time, um, if we decided that we were not going to, to fill them. And the main two, those main two are really the only two in that list of six that I shared with you was the city planner, which was my old role, and then the public relations office officer, uh, which has not been filled, uh, we've just been doing, we've been doing that through, um, uh, some staff in the, the Main Street office. Uh, I do plan to, to fill the position of accounting manager and code enforcement officer, so, uh, those two would not be available to pull that money out. Um, and then there's a chief mechanic position that, uh, just, I think probably just has not been advertised yet. I have not had a discussion with Mr. Thomas about that, and then there's a crew leader for cemeteries and parks that I suspect is the same situation, so, um, just kind of, I, I really, I really didn't have any specific questions from y'all yet, so I was just trying to, trying to give y'all some idea about some other places where funds might be available in case you wanted to go back and look at funding any of these requests that the department's head shared with you, uh, two weeks ago, and that's some areas that, uh, that might be available for, um, for those positions. Um, as I mentioned last week, we would be able to, we would be able to use the remaining CARES Act funds that we have. If you remember, we were supposed to get three rounds of that, we ended up with one, uh, but we have utilized it to pay, um, overtime, uh, due to, uh, COVID situations during the last, uh, fiscal year, and we will continue to use that to pay for COVID-related overtime or the two-week COVID pay that you all extended to June 30th, if necessary. Uh, we also purchased PPE with that, uh, as well as did some cleaning of some of our facilities when we had positive COVID cases. There's still just a little, approximately $600,000 of that left, so we could utilize that. That is in our budget, the way it came to us, it can become general fund, um, funds, and, uh, it could be used for personnel this year, but it would be only for this year. We would have to, we would have to sustain it in years to come. I don't think there was a point in time when I thought we might be able to use some, uh, some ARPA money, the American Rescue Plan Act money to, um, to pay some new personnel with. We have yet to get the final, um, as final as I think there'll ever be guidelines from Treasury on that. Uh, Ms. Danzy and I will be attending a webinar tomorrow afternoon to get even more information on that. Uh, I, that was actually part of the GMA call this morning, too. It seems like to me the potential to be able to pay some payment differential to certain types of essential staff will be there and maybe even be able to do it retroactively, but I don't think, I, I don't think ARPA money is going to be able to be used to pay for, uh, for brand-new positions even in the first responder area. Now, maybe, I may, I may wind up being totally wrong about that, but based on what I see right now, um, I don't, I don't think that's going to be the case. But I, I will know, hopefully, I may even know more after tomorrow, but I'm not sure I'll know that much more after tomorrow because, like I said, the Treasury, the final, um, guidelines from, from the US Department of Treasury have not, uh, have not come out yet, so. So with that, I'll answer any questions that anybody has, um, and try to give you any information that we have. If we don't have it available tonight, we will certainly get it to you, uh, and get it back to you very, uh, very quickly.
What about that? Have we been looking into helping show for, for early retirees? You know, we had talked about it several times.
That was something that the pension committee looked at when the last we met, um, and, uh, actually, Mr. Chambers, you want to share what I end result was for that? Since that's your committee, I don't want to jump ahead of you.
Oh, you're not jumping ahead?
Okay. Are you okay with me telling Mr. Mullins what, where we got to?
We, we already have, uh, mentioned that, uh, the, the committee voted in favor of, uh, sending it on to full council for consideration with this budget. Uh, the, the biggest thing is that we started looking at, at several different parameters and, and I, I think that's what we've got to do more than anything is, is cut through it and, and get to a point of an age, uh, and, and then just go forward with it. Uh, it seemed to me that most seem to agree that the age of 62, uh, in 20 years of service, uh, were pretty much in line with where everybody wanted to be. Uh, anything much less than that because we kicked around 10 years of service, 15 years, so on and so forth, but, um, now, I, I don't know, Jeanette, you may have different recollection of that.
First of all, we needed to see-
With all this COVID, it seems everything is, uh, you know, everything goes by so slow. It just seems like ages ago when we had that meeting and it was just a couple of months.
Well, first of all, it's, I mean, we needed to see exactly what different prices and what the cost was going to be for different scenarios.
We did, uh, one of the things y'all asked us to do was contact GMA to see if they could give us a determination as to if we did that, if that would cause rates to increase. Um, Mervin did that, and what GMA came back and said was if you did it, uh, whatever fiscal year you did that, in, that would be the rate that you would have that year, but, uh, they would send out a questionnaire in the, in the future years for us to let them know how many people we anticipated would be taking advantage of, of that, uh, as part of their, uh, retirement package, and they said that that might have the potential to increase the, the, the cost of the insurance to both the individual and the city then, based on the number of people that were taking advantage of it, but that, that was as specific as they could, could get with us. Uh, the only thing I remember, Mr. Chambers, that you didn't mention was, um, uh, there was, there was some discussion about when, when it was actually passed, did we need to say, uh, say 62 and 20 years of service and with the, with the expectation that that meant people would only have it for three years, and did we need to include any language that would make three years a maximum? So if, if in the future, things changed where you had to be 66 or 67 or whatever the age may be raised to, to get Medicare, then would there be a maximum amount of time that an early retiree, not an early retiree, but a retiree could keep that insurance? And then, um, the only other thing that I remembered was we were talking about the employee paying 50% of the coverage, uh, if they took it with them. So, we looked at 20, 30, 40, and 50%, and I think the general consensus of the committee was that 50% was still less than you could buy it on the open market.
Much, uh, much less. Um, the, the one thing that, that you may, uh, consider would be just stating the age of 65, and that, that way that someone that reaches the age of 62 and they wanted to do this, and by the time they get the paperwork through and all that, they're 62 and a half, and you'd say three years, then that's 65 and a half, and I, I think, you know, getting to that point of being able to swap over to Medicare and, and, uh, taking the insurance out of the equation at that point in time, unless they wanted to, you know, I think they could go Cobra and but they-
They could Cobra another 18 months, right.
Right, they could pay 100% of it, but.
But I, I think that's a good point, just say up to age 65, and then if, if Medicare did increase, or the age for Medicare increased after that, you, you would be able to cover that, or you might even go back and look at the resolution to, to up to age at that point in time, so.
Mr. Mullins, I don't remember the exact cost, but, uh, I know one thing that we have looked at in the past was that, uh, that sometimes will free up, uh, someone that maybe occupies an upper-level position, and then you have someone from below move in and, and so on and so forth, up the, up the ladder, and, and, uh, that ends up, uh, freeing up some money sometimes within payroll, and, uh, can help offset whatever extra costs that it would be for the city. You know, the way I look at it, if somebody works from 62 to 65, city's going to be paying a pretty good chunk of it, and, uh, if, if you let them, uh, take that opportunity and they pay 50% of it, then it's that much less for the city that they'll be paying as well as potential savings on some payroll.
And Ms. Danzy, she, she, she figured the exposure out to 10 years, is that right, Shay? You remember?
Uh, I would be right.
Okay.
At least five.
At least five, and I, I think the exposure for the five years only ended up being, I mean, based on ages and years of service, only ended up being, if I remember right, about eight to 10 employees, is that right?
That's what, yeah.
Not many.
Right. 415 with the current rate, okay. And that obviously would be just coverage just for the employee, not, not any kind of family coverage or anything.
Mr. Griffith, when we do this topic-
And that's also if that employee decides to take that.
Right.
You know, they, they might say, I, you know, I, I need to continue working on my, with, with the salary that I have now and, uh, work on past that. Uh, there was, there was some discussion, very limited, that, uh, individuals, uh, and there are some, uh, a few that have, uh, you know, 25, 28, 30 years that are still in their late 50s, and, uh, but that just stretches it out, um, you know, that, that, that's a whole nother ballgame in my mind that, that the city would be responsible for. Uh, that, that would get well beyond the, uh, the 12 or so individuals over the next few years.
Ms. Walden, are you going to ask a question? I'm sorry.
Uh, I was going to say, you mentioned a while ago that the police department wanted 7% raise and four additional people, and then, um, the Stormwater, uh, is where we actually took from a department and put those people there, so.
That's correct. There were five employees in Public Works that moved to Stormwater.
And we didn't replace any of those.
That is correct. In, in Public Works, that's right.
Let me go back and ask about the retirement. So Chambers saying that you choose between 65, 62 years, and 65?
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Okay. I thought you said 62 to 65.
62.
62 to 65, not between 62 or 65.
Right.
But from 62 to 65 to, to be on the insurance, right?
Yeah, the parameters that we were most, seemed to be most agreeable about was 20 years of service and 62 years of age.
Okay.
Before you would be eligible for that. Doesn't mean you have to do it right then, but, you know, if you wanted to do it when you were 63 and do it for two years or whatever, but to, to have a gap between the age of 62 and 65. And, uh, and, and that's, you know, that's basically all we ended up discussing, uh, or it seemed to me the, the majority of the board was more in favor, or the committee was more in favor of that and sending that proposal to council. Uh, one thing about this is that it, uh, my understanding, I think that this, uh, as opposed to, uh, the way it would affect this particular budget, that it would not come into effect until, uh, January. Is that right, Hank?
That, that is correct, because, uh, that, that would have to be the case with you all approving it since, since there may be some of you all that would have the opportunity to take advantage of that, so it would have to wait until the next council term began after the, the upcoming election. That's correct.
Ooh, well, okay, I'll make a suggestion. I hate to just think that spread a moment. Can we plan like a retreat sometime in the near future and we, we get the figure down for different ages and we can talk about this and other subject more in detail? I don't want to just rush it here at this-
Right.
At this, at the budget here. You know, we can do that sometime. I'm, I'm perfectly fine with it.
So you're talking about just for that retirement insurance piece discussion?
Well, that's, that could be a topic, you know, we can talk about it and some other things. Whatever do we need to talk about?
Okay.
You know, or if everybody agree with that, maybe then if, you know, talk, go ahead and talk about it, but we've been talking about it over a year or two now, so we're trying to do something about it.
Since, since this would not go into effect until after January 1, it could always be a budget amendment for this, for this budget, uh, after we've had the discussion to discuss, the opportunity to discuss it like Mr. Mullins is talking about.
Y'all agree with that? Maybe?
Oh, I don't have a problem with it. And especially in light that, you know, we've still got seven, eight months before, uh, it would even take effect.
Right.
Suits me. We've been needing, uh, we've been needing a retreat to discuss a few items.
A true retreat.
Yes.
Literally.
Which bar do you want to meet at, boo?
Can I ask one question about that, Ms. Inholster? So in terms of the time that you're looking at, I mean, y'all want to, is that, is that fairly quickly, sometime this summer, early fall? What, what are you looking at?
I, I would think probably sooner rather than later.
Okay.
Sometime in the, in the summer.
Maybe sometime June, July?
June, July, I think would probably be ideal.
Yeah, July at the latest.
July at the latest.
Okay, and looking for a Saturday?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right. I will, um, I'll look at some dates and send some dates out to you all in a, a general format and agenda. Y'all can let me know other things that, that you want on the agenda.
Have they confirmed GMA for August?
They have not confirmed it yet. Um, Larry Hanson said on the GMA call today, they would not confirm it until the next board meeting on July 1, but he said, "If things continue as they are, I would be saying, pack your bags." So, so it sounds like it, it will be held in August. And, so we can talk about that some more, in terms of that date later on, if you want to.
Okay. I'll go back to what Ms. Walden, now, Ms. Walden, can you explain to, again, what you were saying about the, I, I know what you were saying about the Stormwater, the two additional labors that we have for Stormwater, those are to replace some of the positions that we took from them, but it was something else that you said about maintenance or, or the police department?
Well, oh, we took five people, I think they were street department, weren't they? I can't remember, it was-
Uh, yes, ma'am, they were street sidewalks.
I think that's what it was, and we took five of those people off of that and put them on Stormwater, so that did leave a void in the amount of people that he has over there to, to, um, get the work done, but we talked last week, uh, in the council meeting when we started just a brief time on, um, the city planner position, and, I mean, it's my opinion, that position, uh, needs to just be taken out, and the public relations officer needs to be taken out, because those are two positions that have not been filled for a while, and with all that we've got that we need, we, we need to, to look at where we can save some to, to fill what we need to fill.
I agree with that.
I agree with you on that, my friend.
Yeah, I do, too.
I agree, I agree.
I mean, that's, that's, that's my-
I totally agree with you on that.
So, is it okay, in order for me to do my budget, is it okay that I go ahead and mark out? Because I can't, until I know what I'm dealing with, I really can't.
It's, it's kind of, it's kind of hard to gauge all these-
Okay, so everybody, if you've got your stuff, I'm going to mark out the city planner, and I'm going to mark out public relation officer, and I can take that money and put it out on the side like I did with this $88,000 with the insurance, is that right?
That is correct. Would you like to know a total amount of that, or are you just going to go by the figures on, that I shared with you?
I'm going to write them down on my little notepad, so I've got it to where I can, when I'm doing this, I can. And, um, is there anything, the code enforcement officer, we definitely need.
That's going to be, yeah.
Where, where are you at with hiring that?
Uh, I'm getting ready to advertise that position. I went through and reworked the, um, the advertisement that had been used in the past, um, and most likely will be advertising for that position no later than first week in June, but probably before then.
Okay, and this accounting manager, manager that we have got here, um, before, we, we only had one, but, um, when our previous city manager was here, he, he split it up to where there would be two, and he said that one would be able to check the other one and stuff like that. Are you seeing that, that we're going to need that second one, or are we not?
I, I think that, I, I mean, Ms. Danzy has been wonderful at, at her work and, and having information available, um, when I've asked her for it, but I, I think there's some advantage to having someone who concentrates purely on the enterprise funds-
Yes.
And managing the funds of those, um, that, that would report to Ms. Danzy either in her acting finance director position or, or if it were the time we choose to take the interim off of her title. So I, I think, I think that position is, is extremely important from an enterprise standpoint.
It's going to stay-
Especially since we've added a third enterprise fund to it in the last year, to year and a half.
I have two questions out of that question. First of all, out of that statement, first of all, when you say, "When we take the interim from," I could have sworn that we decided back when these, um, positions were given, that that was the easiest thing out of all the stuff that we had to do, was go ahead and make her permanent. Now, somebody correct me if I'm wrong, you know, when he brought this redoing, re, you know, re-
Reclassification.
Reclassifications, out of all the stuff that, that we had, we were given at that time, we decided to wait until the budget process for the rest of it, but we said, changing her from interim to permanent was the easiest thing that we could do, and we, we, I thought that we told you to go ahead and make that happen.
I don't remember that being a, a directive, but that was part of the conversation that we did have when we talked about the reclassification, but I, I don't, I don't remember that being a directive.
Totally.
Clear.
But that's, but that's, I mean, that, that to me is a no-brainer.
Right, I, I just assumed that that was the easiest thing, even though we put off the rest of the stuff about the reclassification to them, but that was just going to be the easiest thing to do out of all the things that we had. That was my, that was one statement that I wanted to make. The other one is this, when, when, um, I, I, I don't know, it's, it's been, when you have an accounting manager, uh, for governmental funds or enterprise funds, uh, does it have to be a, an accounting manager? It couldn't be a, a, sometimes when you get too many managers in one place, you, you know, people start thinking they're equal instead of, instead, you know, equal to, and I, and I know we, you know, I'm, I'm not saying we had that issue, but it could have been an issue when, when you get so many managers, so if, if you retitled that to something else?
I, I certainly think that's a possibility, and I think it's, I think it's a, a good idea and a good discussion to have, the, obviously, that's the one that was there.
Right, right.
Uh, and, and in order to retitle, or even maybe, even maybe reclassify that position a little bit if we wanted to, to do some things with that job description, uh, obviously, I would need to bring that before y'all to create, to, to dissolve this position and create a new position, uh, but that's certainly something, I mean, we could, you know, maybe we could change accounting manager to accounting coordinator or something like that, that, sometimes manager and director can have the same connotation.
Exactly, same, because they, they, you, you, I see it every day, I'm, I'm telling you, I'm not talking about what I know, I'm telling, oh, Jesus, what I experienced when-
We had it in, in the higher education.
So, you know, it is, is, you know, you might want to say what's in a title or what's in a name, but still, it makes a bit difference because it, it's kind of hard sometimes to say a director, you got a finance director and then you got an accounting manager, and so you, you see- And so you, you see what I'm saying, and I, Ms. Danzy, I hope that makes sense to you too. That, that, and, and please tell me, and feel free to talk, speak if you have anything to say about it. But I think sometimes it creates unnecessary problems within the workforce that you don't have to have just in a title. You know, because.
Clear titles create clear expectations.
Clear titles create clear, you're absolutely right, and that's the best way to say it. Clear titles create clear expectations. And if it's at a supervisory level that reports to the director, then everybody understands their place. And then when you, you, you set up the hierarchy, it goes, it spreads out from there. But there's no, you know, we're even, we're even, you handle, you handle general fund and I handle enterprise funds and we're both even. You, you don't get that type of conflict within. There's a clear delineation in who reports to who and, and how things move up.
Right.
And the hierarchy, that's just poof of thought.
And I, and I, I'm perfectly fine with that. I think it's a great idea. What, what I would say is, in terms of the budget, we, we leave a position place in the budget with the money there. And then I can talk to Ms. Danzy, see if she's interested in changing that job description in any way, shape, form, or fashion, and then bring that back to y'all to dissolve this position and create the new position.
Right.
Exactly.
Okay.
Ms. Denise, I always appreciate the perspective that your years of experience working for the state brings to these sort of discussions.
Well, it's not just the state, it's just years of experience with people.
Public sector employment.
It's dealing with people, mostly that you have to understand, you know, you have to understand the way people think and the problems that can come in a workplace environment.
Yes, ma'am.
I've seen a lot.
Well, let me, let me get a clearer understanding of this right here. We keep talking about investments. Clearly, we ain't having no one person here just doing all the investment for the city and just relying on their ability.
No.
But we have someone in the financial institution making suggestions to us, right?
That's right, that's right.
And then the final decision will be the city manager anyway, right?
Correct.
And I keep hearing this, you know, the financial person, you know, like we strictly need someone that was some, you know, ability to invest.
I, I don't think, I mean, in terms of this accounting manager position, I don't, I don't see that as a, a position that needs investment knowledge as much as they need accounting knowledge.
Right, okay, that's what I'm saying. Okay, that's why I just wanted to make it clear to them.
And Shay, you chime in there anytime you want to.
Before Shay, you did like the general fund and stuff, and the other person, they did the water and sewer. Because she always did the budget for water and sewer, and then did the investments and I don't know what else that, you know, she had to do. But that was the two things.
I think one of the things that, and I'll just say the position, and this may be one of the things we want to look at when we, when we look at recreating the position, is the term I'm gonna use. Is I, I think this particular person right here was really important when it came to audit time. To, to get information together so that, so that Ms. Danzy wasn't having to spend all that time trying to pull all that audit information together. I mean, bless her heart, she's done it for the last two audits, plus everything else that she's had to, well, Brenda will still here as a contractor. But this past audit, she did it all. Ms. Danzy did it all. And so that, that, I think, is a big piece of, of that, the responsibility of that, of that position. And, and you know, it, it, it could be that, once Ms. Danzy and I have a chance to talk, to, to get out of the position what she'd like to have, it may not look anything like.
Right. Well, see, when I, when I think, when, when you look at the title, accounting manager, that covers all, everything.
Right.
You know, not just the enterprise funds. And if you want someone specific for that particular thing, then that's why I was saying that position needs to be reworked a little bit. So that it will, you know, even though, now, you, you just said it, and I know too, that she did the entire thing herself this year. But then at, at least she'd have someone that's, that's specific for those funds while she tend to the rest of them.
Right.
But still under her supervision. And that's why I was saying I didn't want it to ever be a position where someone says, well, you just do this and I do all these funds.
Should not be parallel.
It shouldn't be parallel ever, again. So that's, that's why I brought that up. Okay, so moving on, I have a question about the chief mechanic. That, the position that it was open and unadvertised, and then the, in the garage, and then the, asking for an additional person in the garage. What, 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 tell me, what's the difference in, in that?
The chief mechanic is the position that Mr. Ramage was in, and he just recently retired.
Okay.
Uh, so that position, it, it just hadn't made it through the cycle to get advertised.
Okay.
And get filled. What Mr. Thomas asked for in the facilities maintenance worker is, the, the way things had been done in the past, that are still being done right now, is if you, if you look at, if you look at your approved positions, you'll see in the, in the central garage, there are four positions, I think. Hang on, let me. There are four positions in the central garage. And one of those, not one of those people, but at any given point in time, anybody in the central garage, because there's one chief mechanic and three mechanic positions, anybody in the central garage had the potential for being called out when there was something that needed to be done facility-wise, like something very simple, like changing light bulbs, replacing HVAC filters, a stick-in door, those kinds of things. Mr. Thomas's verbal documentation to me for making that request is he would like, he would like to have somebody that does just facilities maintenance, that would not be called away from the central garage in order to do that.
Is there enough to do at the central garage for, for, I mean, because when, to me, when you say facilities maintenance, all facilities.
Right, right.
So if you're gonna.
That's very, that's very minimal maintenance. Most of, most anything that's major maintenance, obviously, we hire contractors.
We hire contractors for it, because I have two of them, I know.
Right.
Changing light bulbs, hanging pictures, you know, I mean, just, just the, the general, mounting a surge protector, you know, things like that, facilities maintenance. And, and so, why would that be a person that stays at the garage? That's what I'm not understanding. If you're doing facilities, then you need to do city hall, police department.
The, the practice has been that that person worked at the garage until they were called to do something facilities maintenance-wise. Now, I'm not saying that's the right practice, I'm just saying that's what it's been in the past.
Okay, but you're saying that Mr. Thomas wanted that person to stay at the garage and not go out and do other things?
Mr. Thomas wanted an additional person to be the facilities maintenance director, who, who would be employed through the central garage department.
Mm-hmm.
One, I want to make a point right quick about the differences in, in this. And, and one, if you've got somebody coming out of the garage on call, that is reactionary. That's, that's something happening and you have to go do something about it. When you've got a person that, that's what they do, then they can be, be out there to try to prevent some things from going down, some things, by being able to check on all the facilities all the time. And that, it seems like with everything we've got going in all the facilities we have, somebody needs to be having an eye on it all the time.
Right, that, that's what I'm saying.
Like crazy to go fix something.
Right, we, we do not have.
I'm surprised we don't. I do not.
Right, I am too.
And we do not have a preventative maintenance schedule right now. If you had, if you had a preventative maintenance schedule, like periodically changing HVAC.
Filters and, and, uh-huh.
And those kinds of things, then there's probably a pretty good chance that one particular individual, with, with that, plus doing the things that they might be called to on a daily basis, you know, one, one individual might, I mean, that might be a full-time job for one individual.
Yeah, it would be, because, you know, by the time you check, you know, I, I could give him a lot of stuff to do.
But the key there, to me, is having the preventive maintenance schedule. If we don't have the preventive maintenance schedule, and that's, and that's not something that's created, then there's no need for that position.
Okay.
In my opinion.
So then, but I guess my, my question is, so if that's the case, is, is, is there a need for a, for a whole position out there at the central garage? Then just for the central garage for facilities maintenance?
No, no, the facilities maintenance position would be citywide.
It just houses under the garage for their budget.
It just happens to be under the garage for approved positions. Yeah, we, we could put it, I mean, it could be put, it, it could be put in buildings and grounds.
Mm-hmm.
It, it could, I mean, it could be, it could be put in a number of different places. The, the, someone coming, someone doing that role has typically been from the central garage, and I think that's the reason Mr. Thomas just requested the additional person for central garage.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to understand why.
But if the position was, if the position was created and made available, you know, we could, we could look at the department that it best fit, and building and grounds might be it.
Mm-hmm.
So some of these things are done by contractors, and the first one that I'd like to ask about is HVAC. Is that's handled by a contractor, or is that handled in-house?
Major HVAC is handled by a contractor.
But routine maintenance is handled in-house?
What, what do you define as routine maintenance?
Filters, filters, belts.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, that, and oil changes and rotations and all that's handled.
But my point about not having a preventative maintenance schedule is, is the schedule word.
Well, and, 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 absolutely. And that's my next point is, is if, if we could get a list of preventative maintenance from Mr. Thomas, what this individual would be charged with, you know, what they would be responsible for. I'd like to see a sample of what that might be.
And I'm thinking, I guess I'm thinking that while they're at the garage and they're not doing preventive maintenance, what are they doing? What would they do?
Right, you know, are, are they assisting with other duties at the central garage when they're not doing preventative maintenance around the entire city? But, but what is, what does that preventative maintenance schedule look like? I'm sure there's plenty that they can assist with. You always need someone to be a gopher in a shop.
Right.
You always need someone to say, hand me that ratchet. But that individual, I think, would, would need enough on their plate to qualify a full position.
Qualify for a full-time slot.
Sure, sure. So I'd like, I'd like to see a preventative maintenance schedule.
Either that or looking at, at a half-time slot in buildings and grounds and a half-time slot in streets and sidewalks to make one position or something.
That's, that's a thought too. But, yeah, I think, I think a, a look at a preventative maintenance schedule proposal from Mr. Thomas would be great.
Okay.
The next one was a crew leader for cemetery and parks position. Did somebody leave? Or is that the reason that's open?
Uh, no, that is a, that is a, oh, okay, I'm sorry, in the, in the, in the open positions, yes.
Yeah.
And like I said, I, I think, I have not, I have not discussed it with him, but I suspect that Mr. Thomas just has not gotten with Ms. Graham to get that advertised yet. When the person left, I'm not sure, to tell you how long that position has been open.
Didn't we have somebody to contract or something to come in and start doing?
We, we actually, in, in, at the first meeting in June, you all will be, and you'll get it before then, obviously, but you'll actually be receiving a new contract for, for mowing at the parks, the cemeteries, at the greenway, and right-of-way. So that, that, the, the actual mowing part is being contracted out, but the other maintenance in terms of cleaning, trash pickup, those kinds of things, that those areas are not being contracted out. Our public works staff are doing those.
On that point, I, I did receive a comment from a citizen here locally regarding trash and litter and debris at the cemetery in particular. When we do get that contract put out there, I think it would be beneficial to make sure to coordinate the pickup routine for litter before grass cutting and mowing, just to, because, you know, the mowers are there to mow, blow, and go. I get it. But if we're chipping up paper cups and whatever else, we're just creating more of a problem. So we need to make sure that those schedules are coordinated.
We having to deal with the same thing in right-of-way.
Yep, yep.
I mean, we've always had to deal with it in right-of-way, but it seems to be a greater issue now.
Yes.
I think Dr. Lee was asking the question.
Yeah, I have a question dealing with the cemeteries. I have had four people, and I don't know if this is the right time or not, but four people who usually don't complain, and one person who holds an office in the county in regards to the cemetery. Is there any way, I mean, the cemetery should always be cleaned at all times, but especially during the holidays. During Mother Day, the grass was high, paper, litter, I mean, it was, it was, it was kind of bad. And one person even came to my home and said that, I know how you are about the cemeteries, and I'm pretty, I'm surprised that the things are the way that they are. And I told him that I would address this. I don't know what can be done or how it could be done. Again, it should be cleaned at all times, but especially during the holidays and Mother Day. We have people coming out of town, come to visit, and put graves on, put flowers on, on the graves. And to see that is, is not a good thing. I had one family who usually come down from jurors, they always brag on how clean we have the cemetery, how we have the grass cut in previous years, and it wasn't this time.
I, I will, I will identify holidays like Mother's Day, Father's Day, Christmas, some major holidays, especially where we may have people coming from out of town to, to pay their respects at the cemeteries and share with Mr. Thomas that those are times that the cemeteries need to be looking their best. I think that was, I think that was something Mr. Ball did, just, that was his thought process. And, and, and I think it's, I, I think it's important, and I think the point that you're making is, is excellent. And I will communicate that with Mr. Thomas and have him manage his people accordingly, as well as coordinate with the contractor to make sure that it's mowed on those days, or just, just prior to those days.
Thank you.
Okay, so.
I want to mention something very quickly. I'm gonna get back to this facility maintenance worker. I think there, there seems to be a downplaying of this responsibility. I just, I, I see that as being somebody that has some type of electrical and plumbing knowledge and all that. I'm just, I'm, if, if somebody didn't do anything but run around every bathroom we got and fix leaking faucets, that just about paid for the position.
Well, and I, Steve, I agree with you. I think it needs to be at least a general trades craftsman that has the ability to do all of those things.
Right.
Yeah, I don't think we should downplay it at all.
It's got to be somebody that, that can get in there, and, and I think it would save us some contract fees of having, bringing in contract labor, contract work.
Yeah, I think there certainly has to be a, a level of training and expertise there for that person to do that, that's for sure.
And if anyone can speak to the value of preventative maintenance for mechanical issues, it's Steve. He fights in the trenches, I've seen it.
Yes, it, it, it needs to be.
Where's the price tag of it?
The price tag is $58,000.
That's including insurance and.
That's including family coverage insurance, FICA, FICA med.
So what's the base salary?
What's the base salary?
The whole, the whole box whack.
Base salary is. Twenty-eight, is it twenty-eight six? Twenty-eight, six, seventy-five is the base salary, so.
It's gonna be kind of hard.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
ATV qualifications, you know, it might be, you can charge the system up or something like that.
But that's pay grade, that's at pay grade 13, which is what, other than the chief mechanic in the central garage, what they are at. So, but that is, that's pay grade 13A, and, and we typically look at A, B, or C as a starting point. And then, once someone successfully completes their six-month probation, they go up to the next letter. But I, I, I agree with your point, Mr. Mullins, it's probably gonna be difficult. agree with your point, Mr. Mullins, it's probably gonna be difficult. It's difficult to get people at our pay grades across the board right now. Ms. Danzy has a utilities billing clerk that she's been interviewing for and, you know, the, obviously, the best candidates want more money than is currently in the pay scale, and that's really something, I mean, I, you know, it's gonna create the need for additional revenue, I know, but I think our pay scale that we're currently using was, was passed in two thousand twelve, I think. So, that, I mean, that's, you know, it's almost twenty years old, so we, that's, that's something else we've got to look at the potential for, for changing, but, you know, and, and you can't, I mean, obviously, you can't tell, you can't tell an incumbent or someone coming into a position, you know, this, but as I, as I said in our last meeting, a big piece of ours that I think so many people forget and is certainly not used oftentimes when comparing other cities and counties, is the fact that we pay a hundred percent pension for our employees and not many places anywhere anymore, especially governments are doing that, so. And then, as I mentioned in our last meeting, we, we automatically figure for family insurance, because we have to assume that's what's gonna happen when somebody comes along, and sometimes that may or may not be the case, so. Part, part, part of our problem is, you know, if we, if we keep up with the market demands right now, we are in danger of bringing people on to work, making more than the people that we've got working or making.
That happens.
So, we have to really watch that very closely to try to keep that from happening.
Even more reason for retreat.
I agree with that, Steve.
I'll put pay scale study right at the top of that list.
Exactly. Yeah, because, okay, so, I'm just gonna bring out something else. So, two additional utility service workers and utility maintenance operator will cost us more than it does a salary increase for all sworn personnel?
Um.
That's, that's a.
Yes. So, you don't, you don't have to figure the insurance in for the salary increase for sworn personnel you do for the new positions?
Right. So, I really didn't get the, I, I know they said because of Central State Hospital for the justification for the two utility service workers. So, what are they just gonna be linesmen, line workers, or what type of service workers?
Now, the utility maintenance positions would be basically for the water and sewer.
So, for water maintenance?
Right, that's correct.
And the oper, and the maintenance operator?
Same, same thing.
What, what are they gonna be?
The operator is the person that, that typically utilizes the heavy equipment on the projects. So, it's, it's a, it's a higher level of expertise.
And, you know, and I'm, I, I just, I see so many of them standing around doing nothing while, while one person is on the machine. I'm, I'm just trying, how many maintenance operators do they have there?
They are currently.
I mean, people all the time tease me too about, yeah, I saw you guys standing around looking down in the hole while that one guy was working. They say that all the time. Or one guy was on the machine and the rest of them standing around looking.
Well, oftentimes, when the machine operator finds an issue, then everybody jumps down in the hole and gets it done, but obviously, you can't have the people down in the hole while.
While the machine is down. I have explained that to them too, but, you know, I, I guess I'm just trying to understand what, you know, how, how many, we have equipment for another operator to operate. I thought we were short of some equipment or we had things broken that going up, that we needed more equipment.
I believe we were looking at purchasing a new paving machine that's on back order.
That's, that's a different department.
Paving machine has been, has been purchased and we're expecting that the, the patcher is on back order, so.
Now, now, some of these positions with, with utilities maintenance, can they be used back and forth with roads and streets?
Not really, because it's kind of a different level of expertise. But, what I would like to do, because right now, utility maintenance, say if there's a road cut involved in their work, currently, they, they fill and tamp the road and then Public Works gets an asphalt order.
Okay.
What my preference would be is that as soon as the utility maintenance folks get done, it becomes a public works project and they fill and tamp to the level that they needed to in order to come back and, and either asphalt or concrete the cut. But that's not a transition we've made at this point in time, because oftentimes with utility maintenance people, I would say probably at least forty percent of the time with utility maintenance people, that work's being done in the middle of the night.
True.
What, what is the overtime? That's been an issue in the past. I don't know what it looks like now with utility maintenance.
Um, this, this year really hasn't been too bad. Golly, I, I hate to say this, because I'm gonna jinx it, but, um, we, our utility maintenance folks and the, and the work that they've needed to do, a lot of it has been routine maintenance that occurred during the forty-hour week. But we, we have had some situations with overtime. The, one of the ones that comes to my mind is, is the, the issue that we had that was causing our problems at Baldwin State Prison in G O back in October, November, I can't remember exactly when. We, we had one on Robertson Mill Road about six weeks ago that wound up involving some, some, a fair amount of overtime, because that's a very high-pressure line, and some of that had to be done at night. But a lot of times, what we, what we find is that if folks work at night, they will prefer to have the time off at some point in time during that week if they can, rather than getting the overtime. The unfortunate thing is the way, the way breaks sometimes happen is they come in bunches, so you may find yourself having to work fifty hours a week, couple of weeks in a row in order with the way the breaks are, are happening. But I, I don't have an exact figure, Mr. Chambers, I can certainly get that for you in terms of, of every department, but our utility maintenance areas have been, have been pretty standard so far this year.
And this, this may be an anomaly. I don't, I don't know. I just remember seeing it in the budget in the past, that, that did seem to be one department, the police department being another, that there seemed to be overtime. And the only reason I'm even bringing that up is that normally, if you get into a certain amount of overtime, then you start to justify an extra position.
Right.
And, and I'm just, you know, if it was there, then possibly we have calls for that to, to be looked at, but, but if it's not, then, you know, maybe, maybe our current staff holds status quo.
And I, and that's a good point, and I was just about to say, you know, offering, offering people overtime, it sounds crazy that people wouldn't take overtime, but if you spent the last two days down in a coal hole and the third day is another coal hole and that happens to be overtime, I mean, I, I can understand how somebody would not want it there. So, so having the opportunity to bring in fresh staff is, is as important as, as getting the work done. So, so that's a good point. We can certainly look at, we can certainly look at overtime figures, even, even on average, say, over the last three years, and determine if the last three-year overtime average would be enough to actually hire an additional person. So, excellent, excellent point.
What about the, the revenue for my, to, to Central State? Has it increased a whole lot over the years and, and stomped in the stormwater revenue?
Storm, stormwater revenue, you know, we've, we've had some really big stormwater projects that were kind of emergency situations, so the stormwater revenue since its inception, it's just, it's just kind of kept up. And some, some of that has to do with the, the whole accounting piece, because you moved, you know, five employees over there. So, that immediately started pulling from some of that money. But, you know, I really, our, our stormwater projects have been really big, and like I said, in some cases, emergency situations. We just, probably in about November of last year, finalized the buildings at Central State Hospital that meters needed to be put on after our five-year period with, with them and, and the agreement that was made with, with, between the state and, and the city when that system was taken over. So, we, we have not had a full year of water revenues from Central State Hospital yet, but, but obviously, the buildings that have been metered out there, for the most part, they're, they're gonna be large water users, and I, I think we will, I think we will see that coming down the pipeline. But I also think that the Central State Hospital water and sewer system, as much like the stormwater system, it, it may just give us the opportunity to stay caught up for a, a year or two until we start looking at some revenue, but, and, and actually, now that I think about it, I think we've, I think we've even still got two buildings at Central State maybe that need to be metered that have not been metered yet. So, you know, we're getting there. I think, I think once Food Service Partners gets up and running full bore, that they are anticipating they will, that will be a huge water user. So, that potential, yes. Part of the problem we have at Central State is it takes a long time to do a project, because, you know, we've got bits and pieces of, of water and sewer lines in terms of maps and those kinds of things, and Mark Simpson will occasionally come in and, and help locate something for us, but it takes a fair amount of time to do a project out there. What was it, Mr. Reynolds? You were there watching it. We had to cut off the water to the two houses.
The, the two cottages next to the chapel.
Yeah, below the chapel.
It, it took.
It took us three days.
Yeah, it was three days worth of digging to, to find that line.
Because there was no meters on the house, so we couldn't cut it off at the house by the meter, no valves or anything, so to be able to find the line, to be able to try to valve it down wherever that happens and get it cut off.
And, and the line to service those two houses was in a pretty odd spot. It was actually in the parking lot of the chapel.
In your parking lot of the chapel.
So, we had to dig it up again. So, I'm real glad we hadn't asphalted that yet. Still, still put that on the list. But, yeah, I mean, we just need to keep Mark Simpson's number on, on speed dial for anything out there, because Mark knows where the lines are buried.
That's because he put them there, held the skeleton. Don't get me started on that either. Don't get me started on that.
I know. The, the state hospital ran lines like you would in your backyard, the shortest, straightest distance.
They tried, they were advised different, but Mark took it over and he put them there, held the skeleton, so he ought to have to identify them.
I agree with you, and he's, he's been good about helping out where, where we need them. But, yeah, it, it certainly is problematic out there. On, on the note with, with, with the state hospital, could we get a sampling of the buildings that we do have metered?
Sure.
Just, just a, a, a short sampling of those, something that we could, that would be great, something that we can extrapolate and, and give a projection of what that, those metered areas ought to bring us. And you're right, Hank, the, the, when they bring on the second shift at Food Service Partners for, in the next couple of, in the next couple of months, that should be an increase in water usage there too. But, yeah, it'd be great to have just a little spot sampling, so we can project those water usage over the next year.
We're also getting some revenue from taxes on the Bostic building.
That's correct, that's correct. We do have some additional, it'd be great just to do a study of what, what the, the annual.
What he is bringing in.
Yes, between water revenues and the additional taxes.
We are, and we are tracking water and sewer revenues separately. We're not tracking property taxes separately. There's probably few enough properties at this point in time now. We could try to figure out a way to do that and, and do it in the future. But we, we do, we do have some property taxes being generated out there. Right now, it's relatively minimal, because with the exception of the Bostic, the others are fairly small businesses and fairly small buildings. Obviously, once the USDA loan is paid off and that building reverts to Food Service Partners from the, from the authority, that would be, that'll be a big.
That'd be real good.
Push for.
It, it would be a good thing to know, like, like Walter said, if we can gauge the anticipated revenue and, along with anticipated property taxes and be able to justify four additional sworn police officers and these utilities, three utility maintenance workers, because they have used Central State Hospital as the reason why they want to bring on the additional personnel. But if the revenue and/or the anticipated revenue doesn't justify that, I don't see how we can make a, a, a good decision based on the budget, because we're gonna be over-expending ourselves if we're not receiving the, the right amount of money from that, or don't anticipate it.
I, I think that's a healthy approach to this, Denise. I think if we can get some sort of projection on revenue and try to meet our employees as that revenue comes in, because my, my hope would be that over time, we have fewer and fewer issues with the state water system.
Mm-hmm.
Fewer and fewer issues, fewer and fewer issues with, which involve police presence as more and more buildings become occupied and used, and somewhere we can meet in the middle on those lines.
Exactly. Because when you, when you're justifying law, additional law enforcement based only on time and, and, and not really, you know, what are they doing? Are they issuing more citations out there? Are we bringing in revenue that way to justify some of that? Or, you know, we, we just need to know where, where we're going, instead of just blindly going into something just because you say that you need these additional personnel because of Central State. Why is that then? I mean, we don't, we don't have any explanation as to why you need four people because of Central State. What's going on out there that?
I can't offer a complete picture on that, Denise, but I can offer some insight on that. I usually get calls from security whenever they have someone that they need to call PD on, and that may be eleven o'clock, it may be one o'clock in the morning, but I, I try to respond to as many of those as I can. And there's, there's a substantial amount of trespasser activity at all hours of the day and night, and I gotta, I gotta say, hands off to our PD, you know, hats off to them for being able to respond to each of those as professionally as they do. I agree, it would be great if there could be some sort of a fine or fee associated with, with that. I don't know how we work that out. We may have to ask Mr. Davis about that, what our, what our standing would be for some type of a, a fine, but it would be, it would be nice to be able to generate some sort of a revenue from those encounters where legally appropriate and applicable. But there's, there certainly are a number of calls.
But, I, I mean, are people being charged something? I mean, for.
Most often, the, the, the process that I've observed has been that individuals are trespassed. If it is their first offense, they are trespassed. If they are repeat offenders or they are observed in the commission of a crime at that moment, stealing pipes, copper property, et cetera, then there may be additional charges. But for the most part, it's trespassing, first offense.
And then, and then we get, we have some calls that really are not chargeable offenses. For example, we get a fair number of calls to Bostic, and they have to have a police report as part of their report. And, you know, that, that's one of those situations where we might have needed to look at potential impact fees early on. We do have one apartment complex out there that gets a fair number of police calls, but it's, it's what I call the he-said, she-said kind of calls. But, and I think the majority of, of, Mr. Reynolds, you can, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but it's the majority of trespassing issues oftentimes are, are. wrong, but it's the majority of trespassing issues oftentimes are, are teenagers or college students or that kind of...
You'd be surprised. There, there's some older folks. There's some grown folks that we catch out there, too.
Some grown folks that ought to know better, huh?
Folks that really ought to know better. But, you know, it never, it never surprises me what we find at the state hospital, I'll tell you.
And I, and I think the, I think the revenue discussion is a good discussion to have. But oftentimes, revenue does not drive services, especially if you're dealing with an old infrastructure like we have out there for water and sewer, and stormwater, too, for that matter. PD, we, we might be able to, to look at that. But I, I think, I will go back to my, my statement about, we would be good for revenue through water and sewer and stormwater, I'll add to that, to keep up with the needs at Central State Hospital. If we could get those to net out every year.
Sure. And, and again, the, the board and everyone out there is working as hard as we can to convert more and more of that property over for productive use, for taxpaying use, for job-creating use. So bear with us, there should be some good news on the, on the horizon.
I have a question. Have we finished talking about?
Yes, ma'am, I'm finished.
How did you get out of here, Charles?
I said, yes, ma'am, I'm finished.
Okay. Look, I have a, a question about the one receptionist for the Public Works Administration. What are we doing now and is this really something that we need? And we have to be careful when we say receptionist because receptionist can be an abundant of things.
There is currently a, a position at Public Works in the administration area. I, I would, I would term it a generic, a generic term of support staff. It's, it's administrative position, administrative assistant position is the actual approved Mr. Thomas and I have not had a conversation about what his documentation is for the receptionist. That was the reason that I had all of them come to y'all two weeks ago to share whatever they wanted to share. To be honest with you, I, I don't, I don't know, I did not delve into that position that much because it was not one that I was recommending at this point in time, to be completely honest with you. So I don't know what his plans would be for that position. I know Ms. Hannah, that is administrative assistant out there, does a really good job and, and I communicate with her quite frequently. But what Mr. Thomas feels the needs for an addition, for a receptionist would be, we would have to call him back before you all and have him...
That's what I was going to ask you, is that going to be Ms. Hannah's assistant?
I, I can't answer that question because I have not...
I'm not understanding that.
Because if we, because if we've got someone who's doing that position, filling that position, I don't see a need getting someone else. I just see there being a problem. And we're talking about, what, $50,000?
By the time you add in benefits and everything else, easily.
Hope it works.
Yeah.
Yep.
Reception.
I, I have a question. This is about wastewater. Now, I, I can respect and understand the request for the additional increase for the Assistant Superintendent because, I mean, and you all have heard me say it before, what is the superintendent doing?
Right now, he's out on work with comp.
Oh, my God. How old is Sidney? Excuse me for asking.
I don't know.
He's got to be 100 by now. Shay, you trying to keep a straight face? I'm sorry. I, I get too many complaints about him coming in, and this is from employees, him coming in and gone for the rest of the day. I understand why Jeanette is stressed because she's basically doing everything. So at what point are we going to address that issue?
It will be addressed with Mr. Haddon tomorrow morning.
I mean, and, and, and you all know, I have said this more than one time, that, you know, Sidney has been here forever. You know, I mean, I like Sidney, I don't have any problems with that, but he wasn't working when I was here. Look at Bo trying to keep a straight face. I'm just giving it to you straight. He, you know, I, he, he would come in and, and he, most of the time when we called him about something, he was back in Warner Robins. That's when he was staying there. And it had, from what I understand from the staff, it hasn't gotten any better. It's got progressively worse. And...
Denise, are we kind of getting over the edge right here?
I am.
I was, I was just going to ask you, I think we, we may be approaching employee discussion.
Yeah, but...
Employee issue.
I, I just, I'm trying to understand, I understand the request and I know why, but then there's still that thing that we need to address.
There, there's definitely an elephant in the room, but I think we need to change rooms if we're going to talk about the elephant.
Yeah, I, I, point taken, I'm done.
And that, on that piece, let me remind y'all something I mentioned to you last week. As, as you think about this, E, the, the, the two additional operators that I have on there, I left the word waste off of that. So that's two additional wastewater treatment operators, not water treatment operators.
The 112?
112, that's correct.
Okay, that's wastewater?
Wastewater.
Okay.
That's correct. Because that was, if you remember, Rob mentioned that we currently do not staff the wastewater treatment plant 24/7. And this would give us the opportunity to do that. But, remember, I also mentioned to y'all that I, I think we are going to be able to spend some ARPA money on water and sewer infrastructure. And part of that could be an upgrade to the SCADA system that would allow whoever's working at the water treatment plant to monitor what's going on at the wastewater treatment plant remotely.
On, on that note about the, the water infrastructure and, and improvements, will we be able to use some of that money for improving the water treatment plants? Any upgrades or anything or doing something with that?
I, I think so. Once again, you know, I'll say Treasury hasn't given us the final guidelines yet. I think so. My, and, and we will certainly look at doing some of that. As a matter of fact, I sent you all an email today and put hard copies in your box about a, a contract that you'll be considering next Tuesday from Turnip Seed where, where I would like to go ahead and get the engineering work done on the potential for installation of a belt press to take the place of the centrifuge at the wastewater treatment plant. And if we already have the engineering on that and, and ARPA is money that we could spend on something like that, then I could come to y'all and say, we've already got everything done and we've got this money in ARPA that we could do this because the centrifuge is, it's, it's old. So, yes, and, and I think we will, I think we will definitely, the SCADA piece that I'm talking about would be both, for both water treatment and wastewater, and it also covers water tanks, pump stations, lift stations across the board. And it's a way to get some good monitoring done and, and potentially even operate the plant remotely if, if, if need be. My, my, my thought on that is, what, first of all, we have not even gotten confirmation of exactly how much ARPA money we're going to get yet. Second of all, if it's, if it's the estimated that we have the potential to get, I think there's some things that we could do there, but it, it doesn't take but a few projects at any of our treatment plants to use up a whole bunch of money real quick.
But if you, if you get that equipment or you, if you're able to do that equipment where they can monitor the wastewater plant at, from the water treatment plant, then what would be, because, because he said in his notes that we're not in violation of EPD laws.
That's correct.
About not having someone there at night. So what would be the purpose of the two new positions then, if that's the case?
Well, you would, in my opinion, you would not have a purpose in those new positions at that point in time.
Right.
I think if we're able to monitor using an improved SCADA system, and, you know, he, Rob, Rob made this request before we knew that ARPA money could possibly be used for, for improvement or upgrades on the SCADA system. I think if we get the upgraded SCADA system and are able to have the operator at the water treatment plant monitor the wastewater treatment plant, then we, we don't, we don't even look at the potential for increased positions at the wastewater treatment plant until EPD requires it.
Okay. Are we getting our splash money?
Yes, ma'am, we are. We got, we got a second splash check last week. So that's two, based on the, based on the spreadsheet that Ms. Hudson and I are working off of. And if collections are what we anticipate they will be, we should get another one next month for the May collections. And then the way the agreement works is we most likely will not get another splash payment until November because they make bond payments in July, in January. I, I may get this backwards, but I think the, I think their Ju, their July bond payment is interest and principal both. Their January bond payment is only principal. And the way the agreement works is there has to be a certain amount of reserve in order to be able to make those payments. So after, after the May collections, then passing the, passing the collections to us will stop until that reserve gets built back up after the July bond payment. And then the way our spreadsheet is predicting, those, those reserves will be taken care of and we should get our next tranche of splash funds in November, December, and January. And that's provided collections are what we're estimating there are. Collections have been really good across the board. We were very fortunate as a local government and as a state in general that the legislation to charge sales tax on online orders got passed and signed just prior to the pandemic starting. That was huge because y'all know as well as I do, for six months, probably less than 50% of retail shopping was being done in a brick and mortar store.
Certainly.
So, and I, and I can, I mean, I can share that spreadsheet with y'all if you, if you would like to use it, but I'm, I'm confident in the numbers. And we have gotten the two checks that I was anticipating since we started using that spreadsheet and I anticipate another one in, we'll have to wait and see what the May collections are first, so we're still a couple of weeks out for knowing what it is. But none of that, none of those funds have been allocated to any departments yet. There was a, a, we have to create a, an individual splash bank account just for those splash funds.
Yep.
And they have not been allocated out to departments yet. Part of what I'm trying to determine is if you all remember when you were negotiating with the ci, with the county, there was a draft agreement. It never was approved, but there was a draft agreement when y'all were asking initially for, I think, $10 million in splash. I don't know, and this is a question I've got to ask Mr. Jordan or Mr. Davis, I don't know if we're required to use the splash funds that we're beginning to get now based on that agreement. I don't think so since it was never approved, but I want a, I want a legal opinion on that. So what, what my thought is, 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 look, look at the projects that had been put forth in that draft agreement for the $10 million and then figure percentage that, you know, 30% of it was for water and sewer, 30, 20% of it was for stormwater. And then ever how much we get, actually get in splash, just utilize that same percentage towards those departments. If you remember, our, our, our splash agreement during service delivery provided the revenue is there guarantees a $6.5 million and then the potential exists if revenues are higher than anticipated for what's left after the bond is paid off and the, and the, and the projects are paid off, then anything remaining after that will be split by population. That's the answer to your question, but yes, ma'am, we're getting splash money.
I want to ask a question, two questions very quickly. One is, the newspapers have reported overages with the construction of the, the new building out there. About $3 million is what I understood. And are we looking at how that's going to affect us? And then my second question is that it seems like all the construction and rerouting of pipes and everything has come to a standstill. Why are we still looking at dirt for an entrance? And I know, I know the county has to answer both those, but I, I just, it's on my mind. I don't like looking at a brand-new building across the Sahara Desert.
I can get you answers to those questions. I do know a little bit about the, the lack of, of the drive being put in yet, being installed yet. They did have to get a major gas line moved and that was done, I think, about 30 days ago. And then they have since been removing the monitoring equipment that was out there because that, that dirt is no longer going to have to be monitored. So I'm, I'm assuming based on those conversations I've had with Mr. Tobar for that information that, that, that those two things are the things that have held up the front drive. I can certainly have a conversation with him about overages for the building and see how that may impact. But, you know, they, they, they floated a certain bond amount and that, that bond amount was what was included in our, in our agreement. So I'm assuming if there's any overages that are not part of that bond, they would have to come from somewhere else, but of course, that's my assumption. So I can certainly find out that, the answer to that question.
Pleasure. Thank you. The police department in asking for the four new positions, are all positions filled now currently? Or do you have an idea about that?
E, all positions with the exception of one are filled either with officers on the road or individuals in mandate school. He, he just, he just had one position that came open. I talked to Chief Swiker yesterday and he had a position come open last week for someone that was already a sworn officer. So he has one opening right now, once you count the number of people in mandate school, which is actually pretty phenomenal, as hard as it is to get people to work in that field right now. I've been, I've been, there was a time when he was struggling a little bit, but he and his staff took proactive measures and started contacting technical colleges around the state that had criminal justice programs that were associated with peace officer standards and training so that once somebody finished one of those associate degree programs, they were already mandated and they started recruiting through those areas or through those technical colleges and it's been, it's been helpful. So all of his positions, once you count the ones in mandate school, are filled with the exception of one right now.
What is the current base salary for a new officer?
I don't have my chart. Do you know right off the top of your head, Shay?
I think A was 31, but then on further down is 36.
Yes, I think, I think once they finish mandate, it's into 36 range for salary.
And I, I think what we're being told is we're, we're competing with 40s.
That is correct. And if, if you throw GSP in there, you're competing with 50s. And, and I, this is not really a topic for discussion, but I'm going to go back... this is not really a topic for discussion, but I'm going to go back to my pension statement.
I was just fixing to say.
You know, if you, if you comparing the local government that's paying forty and they're requiring their employees to pay a portion of their pension, you're really not comparing apples to apples.
Because we pay it all.
Yeah. Um, when, when he was talking about, um, the, um, difference in the salaries, well, no, I think that, they kept mentioning about education too. Uh, he and Chief, um, um, Collier, they kept mentioning that, the fact that their offices get education. Was that something they were working, um, I mean, is that something they're looking for us to consider as well?
Um, I have not had that conversation with Chief Swiker. Uh, I mean, obviously, his, his officers have, uh, a certain number of hours they have to get every year and train in anyway.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I have not had that conversation with him. I have had the conversation with Chief Collier. Um, you know, one of the things that he, that Chief Collier, uh, is doing with new hires is, uh, at a minimum, they have to be, they have to get trained to the basic EMT level. Um, but they have the opportunity to do that on their shift days. Um, we, we have been paying a, a, a small increase when they get that EMTB certification. Um, and, uh, there have been some that have gone on to advance EMT from there, but they're having to do that on their own. So, that potential for a pay differential there, um, uh, e- exists. Um, but my, my thought is, when you say education, that's, to me, that is, that is either basic training you have to have to keep your job or advanced training that gives you the opportunity to move up.
Yeah, and I, I just got the impression he was talking about, um, like, um, secondary education a couple of times.
I don't, I don't think that's something that's happening.
Yeah, I, I couldn't either, so. And I, I guess.
It's not to say that some of them are not, but I think, I think as a rule, that is not what was termed education.
Okay, and I guess since we're talking about Chief Collier, I, I just needed some clarification. Um, when you change, um, the current six lead officers to first lieutenants. So, he wants, his, his requested, and I, and I know this doesn't come with additional pay, but then when you change all of the lead officers to first lieutenants, so then what happens when they want to be promoted from that to that? Then we have to change, then we're going to have to create six second lieutenants or other positions?
What would happen is, because i- if you created that first lieutenant position, which is not create, not approved at this point in time, if that position was created, um, then most likely that would be your pool that you would pull from for your battalion chiefs when you had an opening there. So, if you had six first lieutenant positions, you've got three battalion chief positions. You basically have doubled your pool for potential to move it up to battalion chief when one of those leaves. So, it, there would not be, there would not be a promotion between first lieutenant and battalion chief. Now, I, and I shared with him, with Chief Collier, that I had some concerns with creating the first lieutenant position because it seemed to me to be very similar to the senior sergeant position.
It is.
That, that they had, and he asked us to do away with and move everybody up to lieutenant. What the first lieutenant position would be is, um, for the lieutenant at station, for the first lieutenant at station two, they would be the ones managing that station. For the first lieutenant at station one, they would be the ones stepping into the battalion chief role when the battalion chief was off. Um, so, right now, there's no pay increase or pay differential.
Mm-hmm.
I think there, I think it may come with a request for a pay differential down the road. What I ask him to do, um, is to look at, to see if maybe that same thing could be accomplished and so that it didn't look so much like the senior sergeant position that we did away with, seeing if maybe we could, since we already have captains' positions approved, not, not the number, but the title, the role. Uh, look at trying to see if possibly you could, if, if anything was done, those people that he has in mind to be first lieutenants, actually put them in a captain's role. Um, and, and then that would still create your pool for, and I can't say it would absolutely create it, because I don't, I don't know until you have that opening, what the requirements would be.
Mm-hmm.
But it could create, that, the captain's ranks could create your pool for battalion chiefs after that.
Well, I, I guess my question is, you would move all six?
You would have, you would have three at station two and three at station one, but that is not, that is not all of your lieutenants. Um, I don't believe.
He's got nine lieutenants.
He said rename to first lieutenant.
So, out of that nine, he's going to rename six of them to first lieutenant?
That is correct.
That's what I read here. And why is, I mean, we have captain fire marshal. Uh, why is he wanting to re- rename him to battalion chief?
Just, just as, as a means for promotion, title promotion.
This is not making much sense.
Now, these changes requested by Chief Collier are changes in the name of the position only? Was there additional?
Right now.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, but you, would you want to go to, from point A to point B?
Depends on how important the title is to me, I suppose.
And, and not think that.
What, 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 what I would prefer, y'all didn't ask me, but I'm going to tell you. Um, what I would prefer is, um, looking at the possibility of, rather than, than, than creating these first lieutenant slots, look at the possibility of, on the days that, um, on the days that especially at headquarters, your lieutenant serves as your battalion chief, because the battalion chief is off, look at, look at a pay differential or stipend just for that one day, when they do that. Um, I, I mean, that, 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 to me, muddies the water, uh, a, a little bit less. Um, or if you did, or if you did the first, because if, if you think about it, the, if you, let's say you create the first lieutenant's positions. Those people are going to be probably doing more management at station two than they would be at station one, because the battalion chief is at station one.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so if you did create an elevated position over lieutenant, um, chances are, three might be adequate, because those would be the three that would be at station two.
And I guess that's why I'm, I'm, I'm thinking that, um, when you talk about moving all six up, because they, they do get a different experience. Those, those at a sta-, at station two have to, they have to do more than the ones at station one. So, you move them all up equally, then, then, you know, I, I, I don't know, I just, I, it, it just doesn't seem like you're promoting fairly when you do it that way. Because so much more is required from one set than from the other set.
And, and, and I, I think your point is well-taken, that you're not promoting fairly until one of those first lieutenant slots come open and then, if you create them. And then people have to compete for that first lieutenant slot.
Compete for it, that's what I'm saying.
That's when it, that's when it happens. If you just automatically move everybody up to first lieutenant, you haven't created any competition.
And I'm thinking that, you know, you, you have, you have, um, six, you have nine lieutenants, right?
Correct.
So, then if you say, for instance, if you had three slots for, you know, the next level, then, um, they, they, then, then it become, and then, then moving on up, then, or if you had five slots for the, the next level, five for the ni-, out of the nine, and then you had three for the battalion chief, you.
It actually becomes a true promotion and not just a title change.
And it's not just moving people up just for the sake of saying, I want to change all their titles and promote them up to this, because at some point, they're all going to get together and say, hey, look, you know, we, we, we didn't get any money for this promotion.
Right.
Come back at us.
And you know, with, with things like this, it just, it comes back to what Mr. Mullins mentioned when we were talking about reclassified positions before and that, you know, we have to be very careful not to get top-heavy.
Right, right.
Which is a discussion y'all had had prior to me being in this role and we have had since I've been in this role.
Right.
Um, that, that's, that's the piece that concerns me too about creating. And I, and I'm, that concerns me even with the captains' positions.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the only reason I said that may be a, a, a potential way to deal with it is because you already have those captains' positions approved, you're not having to go back in and approve additional positions. Plus, as I said, it just, it looks like to me you're creating positions that are very similar to the senior sergeant position that you can work with.
Right, that, that's, that's.
At one time, they asked that we take those lieutenant positions away, wasn't it the lieutenant ones or the sergeant ones one? It was one of them that they la-, asked several years ago to do away with that, because they wanted this.
Actually, in the first budget that I worked through with y'all, you did away with senior sergeant positions and moved them all up to lieutenant.
That's what we did.
That's what I said. The next time, we're going to be moving them up to, all, all of them up to something else, becau-
So, we don't need to do that.
I'm, I'm trying to figure out who is left to be told what to do.
Nobody gets it.
Well, there, there are, there are fourteen firefighters.
That's good to know. Be kind of spitting up and looking around, trying to figure out who to do something.
That's right, and everybody's going to be like, who are they talking to? There's nobody under them to answer.
Hank, just a, a quick question. It sounds like there were a lot of questions concerning various departments throughout all of this that, uh, it may have been beneficial to have some of those department heads here to answer some of these questions. Now, of course, I know this is a, a public meeting and it is open for anyone to attend, but have department heads been specifically made aware of these meetings and invited to attend these, either virtually or in person? I think we may all benefit from having them present to answer some of these questions.
When, when they were here two week, two, two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago.
Yep.
It's all kind of running together. When they were here two weeks ago, I, I sent a very specific email to the executive staff and said, and I think I copied y'all on email, and said, you know, I, I, I did not refer, I did not recommend any of these positions, but I would love for you to come. I didn't say it that way, but come and talk to council, uh, about your request. Um, and, and that's what they did. I have not specifically invited them to a meeting since. Um, executive staff gets the meeting agendas. Um, and I was very clear in the one specific invitation that I did issue them, that this was an open meeting and they were welcome to come. And I, as their supervisor, and I hate that word, but I'm going to use it, because that's the only thing I can come up with to describe it, that I, as their supervisor, had no problem with them talking to any of y'all about their requests.
Well, they, and you also give us written copies. I mean, each department head gave us a written copy on what they wanted and what their desires to get.
But, but to, to answer your question, Mr. Reynolds, I have not specifically invited them to any of the meetings, with the exception of two weeks ago.
Well, for, for any department heads that may be watching at home, I would specifically like to invite them, if they have any concerns or any comments about anything discussed here today, feel free to reach out to me directly.
Absolutely.
I want to speak for everyone else on council, but.
I, I think it's obvious we've got additional budget work sessions ahead of us.
Without a doubt, there's more work sessions.
I am more than happy for any of them to come and answer y'all's questions.
Thank you.
As a matter of fact, I, I think, if y'all remember, I mentioned two weeks ago that my thoughts is, are that in the future, we will actually have true budget hearings with the department heads when their requests are made.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm going to throw something out there, and that is that, uh, we continue to look at these requests and even, uh, toward, uh, after a budget has been approved and, uh, you know, possibly even an in-depth look at the retreat and be able to, uh, you know, one thing about all of them talking the other night is that it, you know, it all comes out to you and then you get a few days to be able to think about things. Then, then you start to realize you've got some questions and, and, uh, I think that's where we all are now. But do we sit here and try to figure out exactly what we're going to try to do to get this budget approved and rolling by July the first in trying to put all this, uh, these requests together and, and, you know, what are we going to approve and what are we not, so on and so forth? I guess my point being is that we don't have to deny or approve or whatever on any or all of this. And, and everybody knows that. I'm not making a point that nobody is not aware of it, but just want to remind.
And, and I agree with that, Steve, and I think that at some point, we're probably, you know, when we talked about the, the thing with Central State and trying to figure out, um, the revenue expectations from that, and then the positions that we have here and, and trying to determine, you know, just, just asking questions and trying to determine whether that's necessary or unnecessary to fill or not to fill or to grant the request or not. At some point in time, we probably, it's probably going to come down to a salary study to look at, to assess where we are financially, where we are with, with everything else and, and, and what positions are necessary and what positions are not. That's what it sounds like it's com- coming to, to me with all of these different requests and, and, you know, whether or not they're justified.
And you, and I, I'm assuming you mean like a true contract salary study?
A true contracted salary study. Uh-huh. How long has it been since we've had one?
Since we've had what?
A salary, a true salary study.
Uh,
Two thousand seven?
Probably when we, when we redid the personnel policy. That was in two, twenty-eleven, twenty-twelve, somewhere in there.
Would that have been when the latest pay scale was approved?
I think so.
And I think that was two thousand twelve.
Two thousand twelve, so that was what, nine years ago?
Yeah. I, I just, I, I firmly believe that we've got to get a good grip on, uh, revenue. And, um, I, I have believed that for the last two or three years. We've got, we, we've taken on some things, and especially my biggest concern being Central State Hospital, but also the stormwater issue and, and how far behind it's gotten uh, before we have now, uh, started to, uh, approach all these different, uh, situations around the city. But, uh, we, we've got to figure out how are we going to continue funding what we're operating at right now, much less if we start to increase the size of our staff.
Right, and we got to keep in mind too that we're one step away from lost negotiations. I just want you all to keep that in mind. We are one step away from it. And, um, if we go through what we went through before with splash, with loss, woo!
Woo!
Yeah.
And that was, that was, that was my point, Mr. Chambers, with all of these positions. And I, I, I told executive staff, and I wasn't telling it, telling them this to try to make them feel good. I was telling this because it was fact. There's not a single one of these positions that I, that I don't think have some merit, but it's, it's revenue gen-, revenue-driven.
Yes, it is.
Um, and, um, and you know, if you, kind of if you look at our, with the exception of a little blip here or there on our enterprise funds, we really haven't generated any additional revenue in quite some time from, from our normal, uh, general revenue, uh, pieces. So, um, you know, I, I know that there were some department heads very unhappy with me when I told them that I did not recommend any of these positions, but it was purely based on, I didn't think we could afford them, not because I didn't think they were needed. And that's the reason. I wanted them to have the opportunity to come talk with y'all about them.
There, there's got to be that understanding that this is not a cash cow and this is nothing more than a multi-million dollar business.
Yeah.
And if, if it doesn't balance. And if, if it doesn't balance at the beginning and it doesn't balance at the end, then we're all in trouble.
Yeah.
And, and we ain't, we ain't heard a complaint yet till you find out that we've got to go into the pockets of the citizens and start drawing out and pay for what we've done. So I, if, certainly they can understand that. And I, I'll be more than happy to, uh, to talk to them.
Well, I've, I've got, uh, I, I'm a color coder, and anything that is an action item for me is in green, and I've got seven green lines on my notes here. So I've got at least seven actions of putting together information that I need to get back to y'all, uh, and I will do that, um, straight away. Excuse me, eight, I just found another one. But, um, you know, so, so far, um, I will tell you in terms of, of thinking about available funds right now, based on our discussion, you can look at the previous city planner position, the public relations officer position, and then add additional eighty-eight thousand dollars to that if we drop back to a five percent insurance increase as opposed to a ten. So that's kind of our, um, that, that, that's our money to look at the potential for moving to some other areas, whether it be new positions or, um, what, whatever. I, I'm, you know, five point eight million dollars sounds like a lot, and if that's what we get in ARPA money, I will be real, real happy. Um, I, I understand from, uh, the GMA call today that, um, about three of the entitlement cities wound up getting thirty percent less than they had estimated they would get. So I, until we know for sure what's gonna come down the pipeline, I'm not even holding my breath on that. But I, I, I am excited about that being a potential infusion for, for infrastructure. And, um, I'm, I'm certainly planning to try to look at using that for that, and of course, I will certainly bring those thoughts and ideas to y'all, um, for your, um, for your, um, uh, questions and critiques and blessings, uh, before any of that work is done. But, um, um, I, uh, I will get this information together, uh, for y'all. We, we have a regularly scheduled work session this, coming Tuesday night on the twenty-fifth. I know that only gives us an hour. There is nothing else on that work session other than budget discussion, I have not put anything else on it. So, uh, my, my question to y'all is, are y'all looking at another meeting prior to that time, or do you want me to get this information to you by then that you've asked for and then, uh, consider it on the twenty-fifth?
I think just to get the information to us and give us time to go over it and all, and then we can talk about it.
I think that'll be most helpful.
Twenty-fifth.
Shay, I know you've got a lot of calculations to run, but specifically with the PD, uh, I know you're looking at the cost of four officers plus benefits and several different levels of pay increases across the board for sworn officers. Could you also look at a blend between the two, like, uh, a, a slightly lower percentage across the board and say two officers? Couple of just rough figures on that, maybe there's a middle ground on that.
And that's part of what, and I haven't actually sent it to you all in an email, but I will with this other information. That, that was, i- in terms of, in terms of the salary increase, that's what I was trying to do when we, when we started looking at three, four, five percent across the board and, and lieutenant and below. So you'll have those figures, I think those will be telling for you, uh, when I send that information to you. And, um, you know, basically what you can do in terms of, in, in terms of what two officers would cost, if you take that figure for the four and just divide it by four, you'll know what one costs, so. So that's pretty easy to come up with.
Yeah, the, the base pay, I, I understand is thirty-six, seven fifty-two currently. So then we'd need to figure any across the board into that.
And the way we, the way we figured all of these requests for new positions, as well as the money that was available for open and unadvertised approved positions, is, um, the base salary, um, plus fifteen percent of that for pension, seven point six-five percent for FICA and FICA MAID, which is the part that the city is required to pay, and then twenty-three thousand dollars annually for family coverage insurance. And that, that gives you a maximum of what a position would cost. Now, like I said, for, for some of the newer positions, you might not have family coverage insurance required, but at least that gives you the maximum.
Thank you.
I just wanna ask you another, uh, quick question about the water and sewer fund. I noticed that, um, on your, um, your revenue, your, um, collections, charges, the collections are down a little bit. Do we have anybody that's going? And, and ma- and, and, I mean, I know at one time, we had just specific, I mean, on property taxes as well as, as, um, old water, um, the outstanding water bills.
We really, we really have not, I, I don't, I don't know that I remember the last time y'all did it under Mr. Jarrett, but I think it's been at least three, maybe four years since we've had a, a bad debt write-off on water and sewer. So I think, I think the time may be come to, to look at that. I know from a general fund standpoint, the time has come for, uh, us to issue some FIFAs on property taxes.
Property taxes, uh-huh.
And, and try, and try to start some collections on those. Also, my intention is during the next fiscal year to come and ask you all, uh, for permission to, um, most likely contract with the, with GMA and/or their, their recommended, um, entities for, um, us to do a, um, occupational tax audit. And, uh, also to do a hotel motel tax audit. And, and maybe even, and maybe even the, um, uh, the fiber and the right-of-way audit.
Yeah, yeah.
To, to, to look at potentials there.
Time to do, time to do something with that now.
I mean, if there are things that are already occurring out there that, that we need to be generating revenue from, we'll identify those first. And I think, I, I, I'm fairly certain the company that GMA recommends for, uh, the franchise, fiber franchise fee audit, um, I, I think, I think their, their compensation is based on a portion of what they recover for you, uh, so.
And speaking of franchise, when, when does, when is it time for that to, the, the one with the cable company? I, I, I had a conversation with someone the other day about, um, um, percentages for, and, and, and mark, about market and monopolies and different things like that, so I was just curious.
I don't know, I don't know, I need, I need to find that out. I don't know when they're renegotiated, but I can certainly find out.
I know we did it, uh, it's, it's been, it's been a long time, it's been a good fifteen, almost...
I came to work with the city in two thousand fourteen and it hasn't been done in the time...
It's been almost twenty years, I wanna say we did that almost twenty years ago, so I'm not, you know, I'm, I'm thinking that it, it, we ought to be...
Need to go back and pull up the contracts and see what they were...
About a twenty-five-year agreement, I thought.
I think we've got a lot of things in the next fiscal year that we can clean up, that may have us realize some revenue generation.
Right, right, that's what I'm thinking. We ought to be pretty close to, um, that negotiation, not like, it's been about twenty years.
Let me, let me make another green line on my notes.
I'm sorry.
That's all right, no, no, what I'm here for. This has been, this has been almost like a, a planned retreat discussion for me tonight. This has been really, really a good discussion. I, I've, um, I've enjoyed this discussion and I think it's, I think it's given us some, some things to look at, and Shay and I will be across from one another tomorrow morning getting this information together.
Things we've pretty much gotta know to be able to know what we can and can't do.
Now, in terms of, in terms of what we're looking at for, for trying to get this current budget passed, um, I think the conclusion we came to on the accounting manager position is we're gonna leave that position in the budget and then we'll, we'll look at reclassifying that position and getting it done before that person is hired. But then everything else, I think, with the exception of making sure that the cemeteries are cleaned up and cut for the holidays, I think everything else, uh, the, the budget hinges on getting this information to y'all, so. We will definitely do that so that everybody's got the information, uh...
Okay.
My, my plan is to get it to you, I'd love to be able to get it to you in an email and a hard copy by the time you pick your books up over the weekend, and then you would have it to study it in the weekend.
That'd be good.
That would be good.
Because we don't need other days to work on it.
That's right, that's right. We may, uh, we may have to have some supper meetings for budget discussion before they were...
Probably will. We've had to do that before.
Madam Mayor, pro tem, out of respect for, uh, Manager Griffith's week, since it sounds like we've added a lot of things to, to his to-do list. If there is nothing else for this council to discuss, I would make a motion to adjourn.
And I'll second that.
Thank you.